Good evening, everybody. Welcome to the Bennington Select Board meeting. It is March 23, 2015, 6:00 PM. We are at the River Street Firehouse. Please join me in a pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the black United States of America and to the Republic of which it stands, one nation under God, in the highest court of liberty and justice for all.
First item on the agenda is the minutes from March 9. Do I have a motion to accept?
A motion that may be accepted as printed.
We have a second. Any discussion? All in favor? John, you were not here, right?
That's right.
Okay, so we have five, and one abstain, and one absent. Okay, I want to go ahead and introduce the Select Board. I forgot that part for the first time. To my far-left Tom Jacobs.
Hello.
And Michael Keane.
Hiya.
Our vice-chair Sharon Brush.
Hi.
I'm your chair Greg Van Houten.
This is James Carroll.
John McFadden.
Justin Corcoran is absent tonight. He's ill. And Stuart Heard, our town manager. Linda Bermuda's recording. We meet the second and fourth Monday of every month in the River Street Firehouse at 6:00 PM unless otherwise warned. So please feel free to join us or tune in on CAT TV. This is my last meeting as chair and on the Select Board. My term is up at the end of this month. So I want to thank everyone for their support and for their involvement. And welcome Donald Campbell, who will be joining the Select Board, has been sworn in and will be on the board as of April 1st. And Jim Carroll, who was re-elected to his seat. So thank you, everyone. Thank you to the board and to the staff for all your help and support. Next is warrants. Do we have any questions for the town manager on warrants?
No.
John, anything?
I'm all set.
No?
I just have one. It's more informational, and I'm trying to remember. It was a payment on the Ninja Trail. Work still -- what's -- that was for $9,000. That was for our consultant?
Yes. It's a part of the consultant cost. We're looking at a river crossing. I think we received grant for it.
Yep.
We're looking at a river crossing and also road crossing. What are that trail patterns? And that cost is obviously grant.
Right.
I take it back. Go to it.
Okay, John, go ahead.
Fourth and bottom on the front page, Stu. It's Bennington banner, website bundle, and a team.
That is part of our marketing cost, I believe. Our 3650 tells me is Mike Harrington's budget. Mike, why don't you just tell us?
Sure. That, if you've been online or have seen in the paper, that's part of the Project Catalyst, the community outreach program. So we shared that cost with the banner, and they actually gave us a great rate and reduced it in half of what it typically would be for that type of promotion. But again, it promotes the anonymous tip line and then the different outreach that's going on.
So those are the ads we've been seeing in the paper. Anyone else? Okay. I'm trying something a little different tonight. We've moved citizens' portion to the end of the program to accommodate what's really been a trend is citizens coming to comment or listen to something on the agenda. So this actually gives them a chance to listen to what's going on and then comment or ask questions further out than that. Also, when we have guests here that are scheduled to make a presentation, we can more accurately tell them what time they'll be doing that. So that's an experiment we're trying tonight. So we're going to move right into the Applegate block grant deferral request. Michael Harrington, our Community Economic Development Director, will lead this.
Good evening. This is the second time we're before the board. Nancy Owens is here for representing Housing Vermont regarding Applegate's Community Development Block Grant. There are two components to this. The first is what they've requested as a 30-year deferral, which again, as described at the last meeting, allows the town to remain an equity partner in the project while they continue to do needed upgrades and rehab to the development. Specifically, this time, it is around energy efficiency upgrades. The second component to this is that they will be looking to implement a new ownership structure, still involving Housing Vermont. But those are the two components that they've asked for as we look to renew the deferral on this project.
Okay, thank you.
And I'll answer any questions, and so will Nancy, if you have questions for them specifically.
I sent an email. I didn't get anything back. Does anybody have any further questions for?
I had a quick question that I think could be answered better at the meeting. The only question I really had was about sustainability. And time and time again, I think this has come up a few different times while I've been on the board at least. You've mentioned that it's very typical for these loans to be deferred and never actually paid off. So from a sustainability standpoint, why can't we find a project that might be able to sustain itself and eventually pay that back?
It's usually typical for low-income or affordable housing projects specifically. We have had community development block grants that are related to business growth, and those do get paid back. But part of the project and the expectation that these are deferred, again, allows the community to remain an equity partner in the project. So if the project is not performing at any point during the deferral, we can always fall back on the fact that we have a loan against the project and make that come due at any point should we feel that the project is not performing. The second piece to that, and Nancy may be able to speak better to this, but it also continually allows the rents to stay affordable at whatever project you're talking about. So part of the understanding with these projects is that the continuation of keeping rents at a lower amount and affordable also requires some forgiveness on the loan piece. So those are the two components that fall into a project like this, and specifically as they relate to community development block grants across the state and across the country.
So understanding that a large capital investment would be necessary for this type of project, whether it be new or refurbishment, would there be a plan or could there be a plan put in place where -- because the loan -- or the low-interest rent should go up over time as well, because people are making more money in that group, even though it's low to affordable income, whatever you want to call it, that group is going to also increase 2% a year, or whatever we happen to see year after year. So if they don't have that capital investment, are they not putting money away for these types of repairs that are required? They're not putting money away? I mean, how does that work? And how come it can't be built into the project over the next 30 years so that they're prepared for payments?
Sure. And I'll let Nancy speak to the specifics of Applegate and maybe other projects that Housing Vermont has been involved in. That certainly is an option for the town if it wanted to lend the money and recapture that funding over time. But again, this is based on best practices in which you saw in your packet last time from the Agency of Commerce and Community Development regarding how these projects are usually funded and then deferred over time. Again, I think part of it is, again, remaining an equity partner in the project, but I'll let Nancy speak to that specifically.
My name is Nancy Owens. I'm from Housing Vermont, and we're the -- one of the owners of Applegate. So I heard your question as being about really the sustainability of Applegate in particular and around, like, question about replacement reserves?
It actually isn't about this project in particular, because I think this is a good project that should move forward. It's just --
More general.
Whenever I hear about these projects, it's always, "Well, yes, they're loans, but we're never going to pay them back." And the understanding that this is just how it works, this is how it always happens or usually happens, that kind of strikes a nerve with me, just to say, "This is how it always happens, so let's just let money float out there time and time again." Like I said, I think this project's good, and I want to see it move forward. I just, I can't get my mind wrapped around the planning aspect of it and why we can't try and put a project in place that is meant to, well, not go with the norm, so to speak, and plans to pay the monies back. I mean, it's well-known that in 30 years, the money's going to come due if we do defer it.
Yeah. So I'll speak to that more generally then, because I'm just to give you a little background, because I don't think you were here last time when I was here.
Right.
Housing Vermont is a nonprofit real estate development company, and we have been in business -- this is our 26th year. We have about close to 5,000 apartments all around Vermont and 145 properties. And we work in partnership with other nonprofit organizations and towns and small groups around the state to build, own, and sustain affordable rental housing. So what you see is the model is that the rents that folks who live in affordable housing are really meant to cover the operational expenses. They don't -- there's no capacity for the rent to cover really any debt. And that's how affordable housing currently is financed in the United States. 30 years ago, that wasn't the case. The federal government, Housing, Urban and Development financed affordable housing through the use of project-based Section 8 contracts. And if you've probably heard of Section 8 housing, right? So a private developer or a nonprofit or whoever would build Section 8 housing, they'd borrow the money from the federal government, and they'd pay it back over time. But the way they paid it back was the federal government gave them enough resource, or they let them charge a high enough rent to carry that debt service. So the tenant might pay $300 or $400 for rent, and then the owner would receive the equivalent of, say, $800 for rent from the federal government for their Section 8 unit. And that difference between what the tenant pays, what it costs to operate, and the debt service, the owner would then turn back and pay back the federal government. That's the way housing was financed for a long time. 25 years ago, they created the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program, and the basic premise of the tax credit program, especially in rural communities where rents are low, is that you finance all the capital upfront, and you keep rents low by not having debt service. And you just try to get, you know, get an operating expense and rent system that works where operations expenses are going to increase over time. Hopefully, as you said, people's incomes hopefully will also increase a little bit over time, and we can increase the rents. What we see is, you know, is it's a little bit wavy, right? And sometimes people's incomes are not going up. The economy's not so good. Cost of living increases aren't made, or, you know, jobs aren't paying more. So we see some stagnation. And sometimes we see operating expenses increasing faster, whether that's property taxes or fuel bills in the case of Applegate. And in 2008, everybody saw huge increases in fuel expenses. So we work a fine line to kind of, to keep that difference between expenses and rents. And we also do set aside money for replacement reserves. The standard is to set aside $50 a unit a month for replacement reserves, for things like, you know, restriping the pavement and replacing fixtures, or when there's a turnover, replacing appliances and cabinets and that sort of thing. But what it's really not possible to save for, especially at a large property like Applegate, is the replacement of all of the roofs. Or, you know, what we're doing with this refinance is it's really a refinance and recapitalization to invest at Applegate. And thus, that's not something that we could save for. It's just like in your own home, if you, if you, it's time to do a major repair, and in this case, we have 104 apartments to repair, you go to the bank and you borrow a little more money. In our instance, we can't borrow money. We go and we raise capital through these investors and through some grants and other programs. But, so in the big picture, you know, it is a balance of those rents and the expenses. We do save for capital expenses on a -- but when it's time to recapitalize and refinance, that's when we need to come in. And if you've got a chance to read the packet, but one of the really great things that's happening at Applegate and is a really terrific opportunity is the investment in energy efficiency. And we have seen, you know, just so much improvement and understanding about how important it is to really have weather-type buildings, to look at new fuel sources like we are at Applegate with a pellet system. And we've been doing that for the last four or five years across our portfolio and seeing just tremendous savings, helping us to cap those rising expenses, helping us to control some of those rising expenses so that we can keep rents affordable. So it's, um, it's not a conventional system from a free-market standpoint about like how you think real estate works. Affordable housing, real estate is a little quirky.
Right. Now, that's a good explanation, is what I was looking for.
Okay.
Is there, Michael, maybe this is a question for you, but is there a reason that we don't just call it a grant instead of a loan?
Beyond my pay grade. I mean, and essentially, it goes through, and Nancy, feel free to jump in, but the program through the state, which comes through the federal government, is the Community Development Block Grant Loan Program. And if you want to talk about the structuring of it as a loan as opposed to a grant?
I mean, you've answered my questions, so I'm more than satisfied. I just, I want to be able to look at a piece of paper and say, "Oh, it's called a loan, but I know that we're not going to get this." You know? And not just for this project, but moving forward in general, because it needs to go into all of our calculations when looking at our budget and everything. So if it's never going to come back, I don't know if, maybe you knew this already ahead of time, but if it's money that's not coming back, then it's something that we should plan for regardless of if it's called a loan or a grant or whatever.
And just so the board is clear, too, when the actual community block grant was awarded, there were no local funds contributed to the CDBG, similar as we're doing with Shire's housing now. So again, just so you're aware of that, those are monies that are funneled down through us from the state.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. And I, my understanding has been that the reason behind calling it a loan is to keep us involved in the conversation so that we have to have this conversation once in a while.
I think, and you bring up a good point, Greg, and I alluded to it a little bit earlier, but in our conversations with Housing Vermont and Applegate, I mean, one of the important parts of this project is that as a loan, it does allow us, again, to have equity in the project and be able to use that as leverage so that, you know, in this case, it's under good supervision and operating accordingly, but that wasn't always the case with Applegate, and it hasn't always been the case with other affordable housing projects. So this allows us to have leverage over them should it cease to perform to the expectation that we have as a community.
Okay. Thanks, Michael. Tom?
I know, two weeks ago, we talked about the amortization. And in '98, I remember, I recall that the loan was deferred for 15 years. And if the loan is again deferred for 15 years, does that change your operation or the rental structure? How's that impact if it is a 15, if we vote on a 15-year rather than a 30-year?
Yeah. I would, I proposed a 30-year because that's sort of become the standard in the industry and what the state sees and expects. In the discussion we had a couple of weeks ago, I went back and looked at it, and I think what, if you all would prefer us to come back sooner and not wait 30 years to have this conversation again, I think that would work for the project is a 20-year term.
Good.
So we would be, that would be acceptable to us if that would be preferable for you.
I just see that if there's going to be any equity, which is a real significant question at this point, the future board or whoever is looking at this, looking at it sooner rather than 30 years out when the property may be fully depreciated. So that's responsive. Thank you.
Sure.
Anyone else have a question for Nancy?
No, but I would support Tom's point there with 20 years. And one question that I brought up with you last week was, first of all, this is a $7 million injection to our local economy, and I ask for greater assurances from you that we would have as many local contractors as possible. And not just one ad in the banner, you know, leading up to the start of this project, but continuous and regular advertising in local newspapers that would attract local contractors. And I need your assurance tonight for that.
So, and we work with a general contractor, and we will, in our process of procuring the general contractor, we will advertise, and we will, we can advertise over a number of days or weeks.
And what kind of, I'm sorry to interrupt, what kind of oversight do you have with respect to the general contractor and suggesting local contractors?
That may be better understood, too. I was just asking Nancy about her procurement process and the fact that it is a federal procurement process. So the ability to select based on where a business is located is not allowed under the federal procurement process. So they can certainly tweak or impact the amount of advertising they do locally and the promotion of the project, and the fact that, you know, interesting contractors should send in RFPs, requests for proposals. But in terms of the selection, you have to make it based on their qualifying criteria that is predetermined by the procurement process.
Well, my question for you then is, isn't Shire's, aren't their projects almost identical in status?
Not the one that you just recently spoke about. So again, that was not using federal funds for the project and was not a federal procurement process.
It was state funds.
So their local project was not, but things like potentially, well, in this case, the Monument View project or the Roaring Branch project, those would be, and they would have to follow the federal procurement guidelines.
What are the guidelines on final submission of proposals? So let's say that a local contractor doesn't necessarily win the bid during the first round. Would you be able to go to a local contractor and say, "Here's the price that you need to meet or beat"? It has to be the closed envelope scenario?
Okay. And just to note, if you are a contractor and you're not used to this, there are agencies such as PTAC or the Small Business Administration that can help you prepare your bidding process for these types of things. There's a lot of help at the state level. Certainly see Michael Harrington about that, if you're not familiar with that. But if you want to become part of that bidding process, there are prerequisites, and you can find out what you need to have in place to put those bids together.
Yeah. We can also work with Michael or this town about doing the reverse, you know, getting names of potential subcontractors or suppliers and providing them to the general contractors who may be bidding. So that would be another way, is we can go both directions, both advertising more publicly and then sending information directly to the general contractor.
So you're able, and just to clarify, so you can reach out to specific contractors and encourage them to submit proposals?
Yes.
Okay, great. So you can, but what I need to know is, will you?
Yes.
Okay. Good.
Yeah, you just can't give them numbers.
Okay.
I'll make the motion that we grant the block grant deferral request for 20 years.
I'll second.
Okay. Any discussion? Okay. And those in favor? That is unanimous, one absent. Thank you, Nancy. Thank you, Michael.
Thank you, Nancy.
Okay. Thank you, Mike.
Okay. Just for clarification, I was just asking Nancy, can we, we're also looking for approval to transfer the ownership or the loan at the time of the new ownership. And do you have a timeline on that?
So as part of the redevelopment, we have to establish a new ownership entity. We're hopeful that we can start, do that work this summer and start work this summer. But it's contingent on securing all of the financing. So the earliest it would happen would be, say, July of this summer, the latest would be next spring.
Okay.
So, and the question is whether or not the board is okay with us transferring the ownership of the loan and to the --
From, from to, just give me a, from what to what?
So in the loan, we identify who the ownership structure is. Because they're going to be reorganizing as part of this process, we would simply need to identify the new ownership structure.
The names are going to change, basically. Yeah. It's essentially, your collateral is the property, right? And so you're loaning to Applegate Housing Limited Partnership. We'll establish a new partnership, Applegate 2, I don't know if it'll be so, but, and the property will be transferred to that new owner. And at the time, all of the debt will be assumed by the new owner. So essentially, what I want to just be clear about is that the deferral and the loan terms you accept or you will allow for the assumption of the loan by the new owner at the time of construction start.
Do you want to just amend your motion?
Why don't we, that's a good separate, I think it's a separate motion, and I would make the motion that the successor owner be, if not recognized now, be allowed to assume the terms of the grant.
I'll second that.
Any discussion on that?
What was the reason behind the name changing? Is that just for applications and the ability to reach out and grab other grants or loans available or?
It is directly related to the refinancing, that we need a new entity to own the property. It's part of --
The partnership changes.
Banking regulations and the stipulations from the lenders.
They wouldn't have been allowed to grab onto other loans and grants
Yes.
Under the same organization?
That's correct. That we wouldn't have been able to, we are using the Low-Income Housing Tax Credit Program, which is a federal program, and a substantial portion of the credits that are created, the property needs to transfer hands in order to make that happen. And so there's a transfer of ownership to a new entity.
Is that also common?
It's very common, like I said.
Just to change.
Just the way it's done.
Yeah.
I know.
I know.
And we should also point out that Housing Vermont will continue to be
To be one of the part.
One of the members of whatever the store is.
Yeah. And it's, again, it's part of, it's, you know, I'd be happy to spend more time talking with you about the refinancing.
No, no, no. It's just, from my perspective, it's a good project that I want to see go forward. It just has the appearance of a very shady political financing scheme. That just makes me nervous, but --
Doubt it's called the wonderful world of banking.
I understand. So, no, I appreciate it. I just have to ask my questions.
And I understand it, how it sounds.
Yeah.
So we have a motion. Do I have a vote?
The only other thing that I wanted to mention was, I know it's one of the first times that we're pushing the citizens to the end, but what if they had wanted to speak about this?
There are some folks here from Applegate residents, as well as the property manager or --
I'm not suggesting that they might have any comments whatsoever, but before we vote or should we give them a, I know we're in discussion right now with a motion on the floor, but I don't know how we wanted to handle that. Sorry.
Well, I haven't heard, I mean, we haven't heard anything from anyone during the week on it, you know, that, or anyone who wished to be heard.
For anyone last week.
Or anyone last week. So that was kind of --
Doesn't have to happen now, but I think moving forward, we might want to address that.
Yeah, that's a good point. Okay. Anyone else? Discussion? Those in favor? All right, that is six and one absent. Thank you, Nancy.
Thank you very much.
And that's why we're trying.
Just to speak to that before we go to the next, you know, we have this two-meeting process. That would be an appropriate time in the first meeting for comment, and then for the board to deliberate at the second one and not have it reopened. So I would think that's one of the reasons we have a two-meeting, so the community can participate at the part of the first.
Yeah. Sounds good. I know oftentimes, the first meeting's what triggers the understanding that things are being talked about, and it can often bring in a crowd for the second meeting. And so I just don't want anyone to come and want to be heard and then not get the opportunity. And I don't know how that's going to work. We'll probably figure it out as we move forward, but it should be taken into consideration before any votes are made.
That's a good point. Thank you. All right. Next item on agenda is a follow-up to the Article 15 on Town Meeting Day regarding fluoridation of the water. That was voted down by an advisory vote. We have put this on the agenda as a follow-up. It says final discussion. It's certainly not the final discussion if I have anything to say about it. We, last week, the Bennington Oral Health Coalition asked to be part of this conversation. We have also extended invitations to folks who have been here on the topic of oral health to come forward. And so at this point, I have a letter from the Bennington Oral Health Coalition, and they have, it's twofold. The Bennington Oral Health Coalition, as you know, as I've stated many times, came out of the VCRD community meetings and has been a town-endorsed committee. They are asking to be a sanctioned subcommittee of the Board of Health, which is us as well in a separate role from Select Board. And they are inviting folks to come to a meeting on April 22, 2015, at 6:00 PM, right here at the firehouse. And we can post this information, there's an RSVP number at 447-3700, or info@benningtonoralhealth.com. At this meeting, we will ask the community members to present ideas and concrete actions that can begin to address the oral health problems in Bennington. We are in need of additional volunteers to work on ideas and action steps that will be generated at the meeting. Thank you in advance for participating and make a difference in this important -- Thank you in advance for participating and make a difference in this important public health issue. So, that's the, that's part one. Part two was the request to be, I'm just going to take a portion of this letter. The Bennington Oral Health Coalition requests the Select Board to formally appoint the Coalition as an action committee of the Select Board under the umbrella of the Bennington Board of Health to work to address the oral health problems in Bennington. So, it's a two-part thing. I would, it's something that I was suggesting, and they kind of headed me off and asked to do this. As you know, they have been working for several years on the issue of oral health. There are a lot of people who came forward with suggestions other than fluoridation, and I think this is the time to start working as an action committee and getting members of the public to put some of these ideas to use and evaluate them. I like the idea of endorsing them as a subcommittee of the Board of Health and asking them to report to the Board of Health/Select Board on a quarterly basis, letting us know how things are going, or letting you folks know, I'll be on the other side of the mic, but how things are going and what they need, because there certainly will be times when they're going to need funding sources or direction or endorsements, things like that. But the conversation happened 12 years ago, and we basically have a generation of schoolchildren who've gone through our school system without the action that they needed, and I don't want to see that happen again. So, if anyone from the Oral Health Coalition or from the owners has anything they'd like to say, Charlie, go ahead to add to that or either one, that one's fine, right where you are. Just identify yourself.
Yeah, this is, my name is Charlie Jingo. I'm a member of the Oral Health Coalition. And one of the things that I also wanted to make sure that the Select Board and the community was clear about is that we are withdrawing our recommendation to fluoridate the Bennington water system. We also saw what the town vote was. And, but one of the important, and I want to make sure that that's very clear to the board members here, that we're withdrawing that recommendation to fluoridate the water But the results of the town vote really don't do anything to address the deplorable health, oral health conditions that a lot of people in Bennington face. One of the positive things that I think has happened in the past several months since we've been talking about this issue of fluoridation is that people on all sides of the fluoridation issue really have acknowledged that we've got an oral health problem here, that we can't just wish away or hope goes away. We've, we can't walk away from it. We've got to do something. So, if we're not going to do fluoridation, what can we do as a community? And Greg mentioned a couple of the things that, in the letter, one was to formally appoint the Oral Health Coalition as an action committee of the Select Board sitting as the Board of Health, and that we would report back to you on any progress made over the course of the next year, the next couple of years, whatever it might be, on some kind of quarterly basis or thereabouts. And the second thing was the April 22nd meeting, where we're hoping that we get a large turnout of people from the community to really generate ideas, to come up with some tangible steps and to volunteer to help so that we can at least start bending the curve on the problem that so many kids and adults in our community are dealing with. Last month, at the community forum on water fluoridation that the Coalition put on, I read a long list of ideas and tasks that the Coalition has been working on for the past several years. And I just wanted to remind folks, just of, just a small handful. One of the things that we really want to do is identify and organize some volunteers who can help during the Free Dental Day that's going to take place on April 25th. It's the last Saturday in April. And that's the day where local dentists and their staff volunteer their time to literally pull people's teeth who need their teeth removed. So, we're looking for volunteers who might help, for example, staff a registration desk, who might transport people who need teeth pulled to and from their appointments, and maybe help with the tear-down at the end of the day. There may be other tasks also. That's one of the ideas that I presented last month, and I just want to reiterate this evening. Another thing that we're looking for are volunteers who will help drive people to the dental hygiene clinics over at Hudson Valley Community College, another thing. It's my understanding that the Select Board is still holding joint meetings on a monthly or so basis with the Bennington School District Board. And we would ask the Select Board and/or both the Select Board and the BSD Board to put oral health on the agenda, to see if there are some ideas that you have, that the BSD Board has, to start addressing some of the issues, particularly for kids in the schools. And the last couple of ideas, one of the educational campaigns that we're doing is called Rethink Your Drink, to see if there are ways to really educate the community about getting away from the really sugar-laden beverages and looking at more healthful ways to hydrate. And lastly, one of the, again, by no means a comprehensive list, these are just some of the things mentioned last month, just to remind folks. We're looking at doing a poster campaign in local elementary schools on good dental health. Maybe have small monetary awards for the winners and then to really publicize and get that information out there. A lot of these small steps can make a difference, but we really, as a community, need to come together, not just a coalition, but the community to say, "Okay, we have a problem. What can we do? And let's do something. Let's not wait 12 more years before something gets done. Let's start today." So, thank you for-
Charlie, just to clarify, as far as membership in the committee, I just want to clarify to people that this is not something that is an exclusive committee of medical people or a particular profession, that-
Correct.
-the community is invited to be part of the Oral Health Coalition at large.
And one of the, one of the things that we may find is that people want to volunteer for a task.
Yeah.
So, somebody may be interested in helping with the Free Dental Day, and maybe they're interested in helping every year at the Free Dental Day, and that's the task. And maybe somebody's interested in helping drive maybe once a month to the dental hygiene clinics at Hudson Valley, and that's the task.
Figure that out, right. Okay. Thank you.
So, you're welcome. Thank you.
Question? Yeah. I don't know who can answer it. Maybe you can, Charlie. I see opponents, proponents, proponents, opponents of a question that has already been voted on. To what extent have you groups reached out to each other to figure out where you can reach some common understanding and some common approaches to dental health?
We've, we've reached out to some of our fellow community members, ask who were on the-
I mean, specifically among the folks here, the most vocal-
Among folks here.
-on both sides, where do you folks come together to create a solution that can work for everybody?
One of the things that I would say, Michael, is that our hope is that at the, we've, we've reached out to some folks who were very vocally opposed, and we've invited them to come to the April 22nd meeting to help generate some of those ideas that we're hoping comes out of that meeting, and we'll see where we go from there.
Right. And several of the people who are here tonight were invited by myself and also by the Coalition to be here tonight as part of this, and I want to thank everyone who answered that invitation by showing up and spreading the word. As Charlie pointed out, there was a lot of activity, there was a lot of discussion, there was some very effective networking done on both sides of the line, and while we have that communication going, let's, let's exploit it and keep people engaged and move forward. So, we said at the first meeting, no matter how this question fell, we weren't going to be done, you know, either way. So, I'm happy to see people still engaged, and I hope folks can make that, it's April 22nd, 6:00 PM here at the Firehouse, 6:00 to 8:00, and start working on some real solutions.
Thank you.
Thank you, Charlie. Anyways, Mrs. Albert, you have something to say? Sure, go ahead. Please do.
You probably know me by now. I'm Mary Lou Albert. I'm from Bennington. We are here tonight at the invitation of Chairman Greg Manhattan. Before the March 3rd vote, our group talked to very many Bennington residents, and they voiced their opposition to fluoridate in public water supply for a variety of reasons. But none were opposed to preventative oral care. In reference to the terrible oral conditions here in Bennington that was reported in the State Health Report, they could not pinpoint exactly what age groups had what problems. This is what the people told us. They didn't see exactly what the problems were. They referred to them. Did one location have worse need, or was it just the lack of dentists? People wanted to see the actual numbers. If there is a problem, and I, I think there is, but if there is a problem, a baseline has to be established so that anything that anyone does can be recorded to see if we are doing a good job, or if we're not doing a good job, you've got to look in a different Some members of the Bennington Oral Health Coalition agree that if we had a bigger and a better dental clinic in Bennington, the oral health of Bennington would improve. We have heard through the grapevine that this might be in the works already, which would be a good thing. Maybe all that is needed are letters and phone calls to our legislators to pass a dental practitioner bill, which would establish another, more cost-effective level of dental care located between the dental hygienists and the dentists. In the legislature right now, House Bill Number 1 and Senate Bill Number 20 are being Maybe if we had more dentists that took Medicaid, have longer hours, or volunteer a few more of their hours, it might improve situation, the situation of the oral care of Bennington. As a member of the Bennington Lions Club, I am asking our members to help educate schoolchildren on good oral healthcare, where that program left off several years ago. I am sure most residents of Bennington will help wherever they can. So, down the road, we don't have to face this divisive issue again. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Albert. Anyone else on the board have anything to say? No? Okay.
No, are we going to take action on that?
As you said, entertain a motion to recognize the Bennington Oral Health Coalition as a subcommittee of the Board of Health.
I'm not in favor of doing that tonight. This is the first I've really heard about this request. It may well be in line, but I really would want to think about it before we create another committee or subcommittee that doesn't have defined, specific roles and a timeframe. So, there may be a time and a place, but I don't think it's tonight.
Well, you have several meetings before that advisory meeting and-
Right.
Yeah, the dental meeting too, so. It's just, it's my last chance to make you do it, so.
I'll get my arm back.
But I, it is my policy to wait a meeting to make a vote, so I'm fine with that. That's just, I want to throw it out there. Anything else? Okay. I want to thank everybody for all of that and for the effort and the attention to the issue. Again, April 22nd, 6:00 PM here at the Bennington Firehouse, and we'll take on this issue. Thank you for that. Okay. Okay. Next item is a Fire Department Private Alarm Ordinance First Reading. This was introduced at the last meeting in concept, but Stu, you want to head that?
Actually, the next four items are all first readings of ordinances or agreements that have been proposed before you before. In the first instance, we're attempting to amend an ordinance that already exists for the purposes of being able to levy a fine against people who do not take care of their fire alarms in this particular case. We already have an ordinance in place for the police department where false alarms are registered, where systems fail on a continuing basis and owners fail to take care of them. We can actually start levying fines against the owners of the buildings. We would propose to do the same for false alarms for fire departments. We have a number of companies that are tied into an alarm system, and if those alarms are not properly maintained, they can result in a lot of false alarms. We roll our equipment and we find there's nothing to do. So, that's the first proposal. It's relatively straightforward. It simply adds the Fire Department to an existing ordinance. And the second one is the-
Should we address them one by one?
Yeah.
Because if we do all- Yeah, you're going to confuse, you'll probably confuse us. Yeah, go ahead.
I guess the only thing I'd have to say is that I think it's about time, and I don't think there's a fee large enough to cover the false trip out there anyway. So, I think it's appropriate, and it'll hopefully incentivize people to keep their systems up to par. So, that's all I have to say about that.
Yeah, I have to agree with John.
Tom? Most of these are tied in together anyway, aren't they? Are many of them, I should say most, many are tied into the police and the Fire Department, so they're simultaneous?
Yes, but there may be individual systems that- I'm sorry. I didn't have my microphone on. How about that? There may be individual systems as well, one for police, one for fire. It really depends on when the building was built, when, when the alarms were installed, how they were installed. But we, we do suffer a number of false alarms at very large institutions, and it's important that they be corrected in a timely fashion.
I've heard it's in the middle of the night or, you know, wrong time of the day. That's really, with a volunteer department, I mean, that even amplifies the problem.
Exactly. What one points to is, when I was just new on the board, there was an alarm that was going off every Sunday, it seemed, over in the Morse Road area. And it would ring, you could hear it come right across the river, ring through our whole neighborhood. And you had found out from the police department who it was, and I called their main office, which was outside of Boston, and they didn't know anything about it. They got somebody out there that week and fixed it. It was something, it was being tripped by raccoons or something like that, that were messing with something and tripping it. So, I would want to make sure that we have an element here, we are contacting the property owners-
Absolutely. This is, it's not quite three strikes and you're out, but-
Right.
We do, we do a warning. First, we talk with the property owners, we address the concerns. We try to understand what the schedule would be to make the, make the correction, but if it's, if it's a system that is ignored and it's constant.
And I saw that in a draft. I just wanted to make sure that was recognized.
I'd just like to add one thing, and that is that I remember this from when I was a kid, that more firemen or women are injured in going to false alarms than at fires in general. So, I hope that, you know, this progressive system will help alleviate that or prevent them altogether.
I would hope so, too.
All right. So, are we going to vote on each one of these? All right, so are we going to vote on each one of these separately?
Well, as you know, we now take two meetings once we introduce the ordinance, which gives up public time to comment. So this is the first reading. If I may, the Service Reimbursement Ordinance, this is an ordinance that a select board, not you folks, but a prior board, talked about at length, and it's fairly new to the industry. But in many cases where accidents occur either due to maliciousness, negligence, or otherwise, fire departments are called to the scene. They expend materials, they break equipment, they do whatever they need to do in the process of dealing with the incident, which is an incident that could have been avoided had people taken proper care. Many towns in Vermont, especially the larger towns, are now seeking reimbursement from insurers for these kinds of incidents. And the initial reading of this some years ago, the board back then was concerned, we really hadn't defined what those incidents were, how they would be different from just a normal house fire. So we've reworked this, retooled this. The fire department and our Department of Public Safety Director have taken quite a hard look at other ordinances, incorporated that wording, and this, should it be adopted by the board, would begin to allow us to seek reimbursement for mostly materials, not man-hours, but materials, that you use up during a response to an incident which turns out to be something that was truly avoidable, or otherwise malicious, or due to negligence. Power line problems, another thing that's been identified, where we are called to be on the scene and simply close the road as a matter of protection until the power company can come. And there may be materials or things that are used that are busted in the course of that event. Gives us a chance to seek reimbursement.
Who gets to define what materials are?
These would be normal operating materials. It'd be the fire department in concert with the Public Safety Commissioner. They would be the ones that would basically enforce this ordinance. The request for reimbursement would be run through the Public Safety Commissioner's office. The manager's office would obviously be copied and be involved through our Contracts Administration Department, which is generally Michelle Johnson. She does much of this work now in seeking reimbursement for damages to street signs and things by careless and negligent operation of motor vehicles.
Stu, what is the success rate in working with insurance companies to get reimbursement for this kind of expense?
Surprisingly, very good. I believe the town of Shaffberry...
Will they naturally pass it on to the insurance policyholder?
Certainly, that would be the case, yes. And, you know, in instances where the individual, and we find this, does not carry insurance, we would go after the individual themselves or the company, depending on the situation and the amount of effort involved.
This has come up several times in budget discussions the last few years, and just, you know, when you talk about an auto accident, fluid dispersed, and you have to take up material and clean it up and dispose of it, you know, it starts to add up, things like that. Tom, did you have something?
Do we, sort of follows on that question or inquiry, is that, do we keep a list, or is there a reference of how many times this appears, and we've had an issue with that? I know there's all incident reports, but do we keep, sort of like, this should be, this is something we shouldn't have had to be there?
I would say the fire department probably has an indication of how many incidents over the last several years. When this first came forward, I think they've been tracking it. Some of the things that do occur is if you use your extrication tools, which are extremely expensive, and they are busted in the process, is it the taxpayer that should be buying those new tools, or is it the individual who was careless and negligent in the operation of their motor vehicle? So, I mean, that's the basis for it. I believe they have that information, Tom. I don't personally have it.
I'd like to just see that, at least for graphic discussion purposes, just to get an idea so that it doesn't appear that the select board is just acting under a whim, that there's actually some significant activity in history that suggests that this is appropriate.
I shall do that.
Yeah, and obviously, the concern is always, you don't want to discourage people from calling 911 because they think they might get a bill.
Yeah.
So, good point.
One thing that does concern me about this one is the open-endedness, like Jim was saying, the carelessness, or negligence, or the cost of the materials. A lot of that could be, it's very subjective in some cases. Would we be able to define that in a better manner? I mean, obviously, if the building's not up to code or something, that seems obvious, but at that point, would the insurance company not be liable for the costs as well? I don't know how this all works, but I don't want to leave it open to interpretation because that could just get the town into some legal battle with anyone that wants to have it.
Well, we're not talking here about incidents of fire in buildings where the building might not be up to code, but the owner may not know that. We're talking about incidents that mostly involve motor vehicle accidents or malicious incidents where someone sets fire to a dumpster on a lark or something along those lines, and ultimately is apprehended. Power line failures, very specific things. This is really not meant to punish people who have a fire at their home or at their business. Now, there may be some of those that could have been avoidable, but that's not the intent, is not to go after the people who suffer the accident. We're talking about non-permitted burns, which are basically people who don't get the appropriate permits to do a burn, or permitted burns that get out of control because of negligence, where the operator leaves the fire unattended, or whatever. Power line problems, and hazardous materials calls. A lot of times, we, the fire department, is the organization that responds to a hazmat call, and there are materials that are used in the containment that, once they're used, they're used up.
Right.
So that's the kind of stuff we're talking about. The extreme would be where a specific tool, such as an extrication tool, is somehow damaged during the operation. You know, you might be looking at $2,000 or $3,000 in a case like that. But the rest of this, much of this, is going to be less expensive materials, but materials that we now purchase through our operating supplies budgets that essentially get used up in an incident. And right now, the taxpayer simply replaces them. This would allow us to go after the owner.
And in most of these cases, there's something, we're talking about somebody who's up, has already been identified as a liable party.
Right, so if I'm thinking about a car accident, it'd be tough to say that they were texting at that time.
Not necessarily.
But they might be able to, right, they might be able to. It's a little more obvious with, say, a drinking and driving scenario, right? I mean, we still have a commitment to help them, obviously, and so we will...
We do, and that's the point. You respond, but, you know, is the response something that was going to happen in the normal course of events, or is the response now necessary because somebody was careless and negligent in the operation of their motor vehicle?
I have a question for you, Stu, and that is, if we recognize that this is a problem and has been a problem historically, is there a round figure that you can assign to, you know, the kind of money that we're spending with respect to...
Well, I can attempt to get that information. I mean, I'm going to be talking to the department about what information they have that points to their concerns and the reason for this, and I'll try to get an understanding of the kinds of materials from a cost perspective, what they are and what they cost over the long run. I don't have that for you now, but we'll have it for you next time.
Thanks. And Chief Dusset and Vickers both had, I think, a record of that when we were talking about that.
Yeah, and both Chief Vickers and Chief Dusset have indicated a willingness to attend at the next meeting when we're up for adoption of the ordinance.
Next one?
The next one has a very long title. It is the Municipal Solid Waste Variable Rate Pricing and Hauler Registration and Reporting Ordinance. This ordinance is now mandated by the state of Vermont. We, at one time in the past, when we were operating the transfer station under a different contract, and we had people in the scale house, we were licensing all haulers that used the facility, charging them a $15 fee to have a license, but that gave them proof that they were picking up trash in Bennington. Under our new agreement, which has been in place for now more than a decade, Casella has the right to take in trash from a 20-mile radius in order to optimize their use of the transfer station. And because we don't pay that cost, it's a per-ton cost at the door, there's no impact on the taxpayer for that increased use of the transfer station. Now the state has said, we really want to know who's hauling, we want to know, to some extent, what they're hauling. We're going to be mandating that if they do curbside collection, that they also offer curbside collection of recyclables, and we want to guarantee that the price that they're charging is a unit price. It has a basis on some fact, some dollar, so many dollars per bag, so many dollars per 30-gallon container. Haulers will have the right to justify a transportation fee on top of that, if, in fact, they're going long distances with their materials. But we find ourselves now with the state, with this new emphasis on really identifying where trash is coming from, and trying to increase recycling in the state of Vermont to a 50% recycling. The state traditionally has been in the range of 30% to 35% recycling. Most people do it on their own, they take it to the transfer station. Other than knowing what the tonnage is, we have no way of knowing what percentage of that is actually separated from trash. So this is an attempt to have the haulers help us make those identifications. There is a cost that the haulers are going to see. The state has recognized that, and they're starting to put in place programs to help the large haulers, especially the Tams and the Casellas of this world, who have numerous vehicles that now will have to be re-outfitted in order to handle this kind of material. Bennington is a step ahead of the process because we do have scales at the transfer station. We've been doing a per-unit cost at our transfer station for years. It's either per bag or per pound. You can pay either way. But now, the haulers are going to have to do that for curbside collection. They're going to have to figure out how they price those containers that you see along the curbside.
Stu, will that pricing be public?
The pricing will be public because they will file it with us, and it'll be available to people. And ultimately, the ordinance and the state of Vermont will require that they begin to report on a quarterly or semi-annual basis their collection rates and their recycling Every hauler who operates in Bennington will be required to be licensed here. Most haulers that operate in Bennington probably operate in Shaffberry, Woodford, Pownell, Housit Falls. So from those that operate within this area will have to be licensed in each and every town that they operate. And part of the beauty of the ordinance is we're all, all of the towns that are attempting to form this alliance, which is a 13-town consortium, are attempting to adopt the same ordinance. And the fee for the license may be different depending on your administrative costs. We'll probably look back at a $15 fee, which is what we were charging before. We think we have in the range of no more than five or six haulers currently operating in Bennington.
Fifteen per vehicle?
The fee would, we're going to look at a fleet fee. If you have more than so many vehicles, there'll probably be a one-time $50 fee, $15 for each vehicle that the small haulers might own. So we're going to try to...
Balance that out.
Yeah, work that out, and it's, I don't think it's contained here in the ordinance. At this time, the fee will be established by each town as it sees fit, but at least we're all operating under the same premise. We'll be able to consolidate that information, and at some point in the future, as we work through this, Bennington County will be able to tell its citizens what is being generated, what's being recycled, where it's going. And those of us here in the southwestern corner of Vermont, as well as the southeastern corner of Vermont, have a unique situation because much of our waste, not a lot of it, but some of it, goes out of state. We have a couple of haulers that operate in Bennington that have two or three customers, and you see the big trucks around town. That waste is coming, they're coming into the state, collecting the waste, and taking it out of state and disposing of it. And the state will be actually enforcing the licensing regimes that each town will adopt, because those folks are going to need to be licensed. And even though their trash is not ending up here, they're operating here, we need to know what they're doing, and where it's going, and how they're handling it. And they're also going to be facing the same recycling requirements if they want to do business in the state of Vermont. So it's a very long title, pretty straightforward ordinance, and all 13 towns that have been working together are, many have already adopted it.
Line three, where it says identify their territory. What's the process for that? How does that, how does that look?
I'm sorry, Mike?
Identify their territory.
Their territory. They have to tell us what their range is.
Okay.
For instance, I mean, if we use Casella, Casella operates within a 20-mile radius of Bennington. They operate throughout the county. They run two transfer stations. TAM operates at least one transfer station, is seeking to operate a materials recycling facility. The Big Boys have greater ranges. We've got some small haulers that simply operate in Bennington, and they'll tell us what their range is.
Stu, I've got a question for you. Are there other places in the state or the country that have implemented this sort of ordinance?
Every town in the state will have implemented this ordinance by June of 2015.
Okay.
This is new, it's new. It's a new requirement. It came out of a law that was adopted last year, but it has to be in place by June of 2015.
But we don't per se have a track record on it, I think, as we're going.
Stu, the licensing charge is, it sounds pretty nominal, but is there a report back from the haulers to the town, or does that go to the state and then back down to the town?
The reporting will come to the towns initially because it'll be an individual ordinance. We may be back before you. If we do form the alliance and it's up and running, and we actually have a means of reporting directly to the alliance, then that, we would be back and look to perhaps alter the ordinance so those reports go directly to the alliance. Initially, the reports will come to us, and we will disperse them to the state, so either through the alliance or directly, depending on where we end up with the next item on the agenda.
You're not going to have a, you don't anticipate a very significant overhead administrative expense?
No, we really don't. We issued licenses through the collections department years and years ago. They still have forms that they have shown me. Our forms are a little more complex because we're also looking for certain reporting requirements. But we don't anticipate that there'll be a large burden of administrative work involved in this. There will be more work for the haulers, though.
With the more work for the haulers, there could be a lot of work that has to be done, like you said, to their equipment. Have you been involved in any conversations about fees to the user?
No, we haven't. We haven't, the, through the alliance meetings with the state of Vermont, Trevor Mance has participated, has indicated that his costs will be substantial to modify much of his fleet. Some of the newer vehicles probably won't need modification, but some of the older ones might. And will that impact his fees? Potentially. But that's going to be, we're not getting involved in whether the fee that you're charging is the appropriate fee for the business. All we want to know is that it's a unit-based price, and it's the same for all your customers.
No, I just didn't know with the conversation that you've had, if you've had any, I don't know.
Yeah, we, the state understands that, and they didn't understand it when they first passed the law, that there are going to be substantial costs involved for the haulers.
Okay. Anyone else? All right, next item?
And the last one, I sent you in your packet a revised version of the alliance agreement, the inter-local agreement, which is the 13-town consortium. We asked, collectively asked, Rob Wilmington to take a look at this from the municipal ordinance perspective. We're going to make some sl... We're going to make some slight changes in the document you originally received, such as removing the names of the towns involved, because not everyone may end up joining the alliance. So there are some small changes that will be made throughout this particular ordinance. We'll have those finalized for you when you take a look at it at the next meeting. But I wanted you to see the changes as compared to what you had originally, and this has now had council review. And Mr. Wilmington's very confident that we meet not only the municipal regulations that allow us to do the ordinance, but also the state laws regarding the formation of inter-local agreements and alliances, which is a term specific to solid waste collection and maintenance. So we'll have all of these on the agenda for the next time and be looking for formal action from the board.
Okay. Thank you. Next item, we have a proclamation for National Library Week.
Sharon, you want to read it?
You want me to read it?
Could be your last official act.
All right. You have a lot of whereas there, Greg.
Yeah. Whereas libraries create potential and possibilities within their communities, campuses, and schools. And whereas libraries level the playing field for all who seek information and access to technologies. And whereas libraries continually grow and evolve in how they provide for the needs of every member of their communities. And whereas libraries and librarians open up a world of possibilities through innovative programming, cultural and educational resources, and promoting the power of reading. And whereas librarians are trained tech-savvy professionals providing technology training and access to downloadable content like ebooks. And whereas libraries support democracy and effect social change through their commitment to provide equitable access to information for all library users regardless of race, ethnicity, creed, ability, sexual orientation, gender identity, or socioeconomic status. And whereas libraries, librarians, library workers, and supporters across America are celebrating National Library Week. Now, therefore, be it resolved that we, the Bennington Select Board, do hereby proclaim National Library Week, April 12th through 18th, 2015. We encourage all residents to visit the library this week to take advantage of the wonderful library resources available at your library. We should say libraries.
Good point.
Dated at Bennington, Vermont, this 23rd day of March, 2015. Select Board, Town of Bennington. Do we have a motion to...
So move it.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor? That is unanimous, one up.
I'll circulate the original for your signatures.
Nicely written.
Oh, thank you.
Very nice. I knew you could do it.
I had to learn to read just for this meeting. We have some liquor licenses, Stu.
Yes, these are, once again, all renewals. We have no new licenses added to the list.
Nice thing.
There are six first-class renewals and four second-class renewals, and I will circulate that for your signatures as well.
And now the citizens portion, do we have any citizens who would like to address the select board, ask questions?
Is that Horizon request?
What's that?
Is there something, that Verizon request, is that not before us tonight?
I'm sorry.
Verizon? This executive session.
Okay.
Contract issue.
Yeah, contract, okay. Go ahead, Mr. Crowley, please.
Good evening, my name is Dave Crowley, I live on Weeks Street. I think I've been here before with you and asked about this on a larger scale, but maybe if we can get more specific, I can get some results. I think we need a pedestrian crossing signal placed at the intersection of Weeks and Dewey Streets. It's the only crosswalk on the entire length of Dewey Street between Main and Monument that doesn't have even the most simple crosswalk indication. There are flashing red lights at Elm and at all other crosswalks, except this one there, oops. There is at least a diamond-shaped yellow warning sign showing pedestrian and an arrow showing it's a crosswalk. There's nothing at Weeks and Dewey.
And specifically, this is the intersection right by the hospital entrance when you come Weeks?
Exactly.
Right. And crosses over to the walkway that goes up into Putnam Memorial Hospital and UCS and all that.
The distance from Monument to Elm Street, which is completely unbroken and minimally residential, is over three-quarters of a mile. And people can get, the speed limit, there's thirty miles an hour. There aren't very many people doing thirty miles an hour on that street at that distance. It's also the approach to the hospital, so it adds not only legitimate emergency vehicles, but distressed drivers as well. Distractions like the very fact that they have to go to the hospital in the first place, and then add in whatever extra stresses may fit in, then add the traffic that the closure of the North Adams Hospital is adding. And really, this is just an accident of some magnitude that through nothing but the grace of God, has not happened yet. There hasn't been a big, major T-bone side swipe accident.
Oh, I begged differently.
Yeah, there was one, but it wasn't.
There was one about two years ago.
That about two years ago was a guy on a motorcycle, driving derially and going and cutting through traffic when he should not. Normal drivers blow through that stop sign all the time. Sometimes they're stressed because they're going to see somebody in the hospital, sometimes they've got somebody in the car that needs to go to the hospital right now, sometimes it's just they're unfamiliar with the road, but I walk that road every day, and people go through, blow through the stop signs all the time. The most charming surprise that I got here when I moved to Vermont was the courteous and polite Vermont driver, and there's still very much in evidence, but they're getting crowded out by drivers who don't recognize the value of patience and courtesy. There's just a lot of traffic now from this sort of tri-state area of Massachusetts and New York and Vermont, and they're all going to this, to the hospital under various stressors. I request a flashing crossing alert at the intersection of Weeks and Dewey for the safety of Bennington's residents and visitors, both walkers and drivers. And I have downloaded some information from RAI products, R-A-I products, and they're in Texas, that they do pedestrian crosswalk stuff, they do electric stuff, and they also do relatively simple-to-install solar flashing, what are called RRFBs, rapid flashing beacons, and rectangular rapid flashing beacons. And they're one of the most effective devices for getting the motor's attention, according to a study by the Federal Highway Administration. You can put those up, a solar panel, and there's no wiring, there's no trenching, there's no nothing, stick it cold on the ground, thing starts flashing, nobody sees that crosswalk. I stand dressed like this in that crosswalk, and people blow out all night. People go like this.
There are a lot of distractions, as you mentioned there, traffic and the stress and distressed drivers. So we have talked about this before.
We've not talked about using flashing beacons at crosswalks.
No, just visibility at that.
The problem with, I previously suggested that if, that little stanchions with, you know, stop, state law, intersection downtown, when you were talking about it, people were hitting those sort of things. But there's really not a lot of speed going on down there. And that intersection at Dewey and Weeks is small, as are many intersections, I noticed from my personal experience, they're smaller to a degree. And if you put anything in the middle there, it's not going to make it through today.
Right. No, and I'm not, actually, Dave, I'm thinking that this might be an intersection where some sort of flashing alert would be appropriate. In fact, the flashing lights at Elm Street are solar-powered. Those are red flashers because we want people to stop, you can probably find yellow, which is a warning situation. We'll certainly take a look at that. Unfortunately, I can tell you from my own personal experience that the red flashers at Dewey and Elm...
Don't always work.
Don't necessarily always work. I was T-boned at that intersection and had my car totaled by...
Four-way stop.
By an individual who was very, very stressed and was leaving the hospital and leaving a very sick person behind, just not paying attention to what was going on.
And I have had conversations with personnel at the hospital about that situation, and they are aware of it. They try to use their folks at the door when people are leaving and try and recognize, you know, issues like that, but they're promised to talk about that and see what they, more we could do about that. But I think that is a good target intersection for some infrastructure upgrade.
Only one, Elm to Monument.
That's a very high-traffic pedestrian and vehicle, yeah.
Can I give this download stuff to someone?
Sure.
I'll take it from Dave.
I'll give it right to Stu.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Crowley, it's very helpful.
While we're on the subject, there's also no stop sign from, if you go along Weeks and you cross Putnam, you know, that's the...
Oh, yeah.
That's, everywhere else there's a stop sign, all the way out to...
There's not a stop sign on Putnam, you mean?
Yeah, right, four-way stop.
Not a four-way stop, there's a two-way stop on Putnam, but it doesn't stop on...
And the other intersections have four-way. Is there a reason for that?
In fact, the four-way stop at Jefferson, Jefferson?
Right, yeah.
It's Washington.
Washington.
That was installed specifically because cars, as they come up from South Street, there is a sight-distance issue as they crest that hill. The idea was to try to slow that traffic down because the street is relatively narrow, and if you've got cars parked on the street, you've got people going at high rate of speed, moving out into the, beyond the center line of the highway. So it was to give a little extra care for that particular part of the street. I would not necessarily be in favor of a four-way stop at every intersection that we have. I think there are primary roads that you really should let traffic flow, but we can certainly take a look at that intersection if you think it warrants. What we would do is we would contract with an engineer, because you have to do a warrant analysis in order to add signalization of any kind to an intersection. So we have to know what the traffic rates are, what the speed of traffic is, safety factors, visibility, sight distance, those kind of things.
I'm just, I'm thinking personally, when you're driving through that on your way to the hospital or something, that sometimes the folks that are coming north and south on Putnam, I think that's right, are not paying too much attention sometimes, and you're blowing through and all of a sudden you're part of the T-bone parade. But it may be an overzealous concern, but I would think it'd be helpful to look at it.
The study will tell us that.
All right, thank you. Any other citizens? We do not, okay. Managers report.
I have nothing for you tonight.
Wow, okay. Other business?
I know it's your last meeting.
I thought you might have something special or anything. John, do you have any other business tonight?
Uh, no.
Okay, James?
I just want to thank you for your service, Greg. It's been great serving with you. You've clearly demonstrated tremendous integrity and competence in your tenure as the chairman. You've always been prepared, and the thing that I think I will always remember is, even in most contentious of meetings, you were absolutely unflappable.
Well, thank you, appreciate it, it's been my privilege. Thomas?
Boy, I just want to echo that, Greg, it's been a pleasure. I came in right after you and you mentored me and told me, as I sat here, if you have a question, ask it, but at the same time, be respectful. And I saw that throughout the time that you were on the board and also as chair. The times were not easy last year, and you took a lot of the board flak for us, and I really appreciate that, and you're going to be missed, the community's going to miss you at this side of the table. But I have a feeling that we'll be hearing from you, as you said, on the other side of the mic, and with your other interest in the arts and the well-being of this community. I think we haven't heard the last of Greg. Thank you very much for...
And I'll thank you as well, I'll echo everything that's been said so far. And I do have one piece of other business, I addressed it with Stu this afternoon by phone, but because of the construction on Benmont Avenue, I've been contacted by a lot of citizens with some pretty salty language. So anyway, I think we're going to have to ask people to bear with it, I think we all wish that it wouldn't take eighteen months. And Stu, we've talked about that, maybe you want to comment on that for the public?
Yes. You may recall, those of you who were watching discussions back then, but this bridge project has been vetted for nigh on probably a decade. It went from a two-lane deck replacement project to, we actually looked at a three-lane project to increase stacking capabilities as you come back across the bridge. When those prices came in in an estimate, the board went back and asked the agency to rethink the two-lane approach. Once we agreed that the two-lane approach was feasible, then it became, how do we construct it? And the fastest way to construct this bridge would have been to close it in its entirety, detour all traffic around it. I think prior boards were very sympathetic to the business owners in that stretch of road who would have been entirely cut off. So the ultimate decision was to encourage the state to bid the project with one-lane traffic. Ideally, it would have been signalized so that traffic could move in a north-south However, the approach from North Side Drive onto the bridge is far too short for the amount of traffic. We would have had traffic backing up into North Side Drive, waiting for a signal to change, so the decision ultimately was made to have northbound traffic only and detour all southbound traffic. It took us a while, and I don't mean us, but the way that the project was signed led to a lot of confusion. People found themselves kind of in no-man's land, having gotten to the bridge and realized they couldn't get across, backing into the various businesses that were there and trying to turn around. Some were actually ticketed going across through the construction zone against the signalization. The state, in fact, has resigned the project to try to encourage people not to find themselves in that situation. I even suggested that they close off the slip lane entirely and force people to go to the light, and therefore you have to make a conscious decision. But that would all require a change in contract and a change in contract price, just as now changing the traffic flow would be a massive change in contract and contract price. So it may be that there'll be some additional changes made to the traffic flow pattern, but the project is now a single lane, always open. It will take potentially eighteen months, but I think much of the end time is planned to avoid serious weather concerns so that the contractor does not find himself in a liquidated damages situation at the end of the project because they haven't got the grass growing yet, they haven't got the curbing in. The bridge decking will be replaced much sooner than that, and it may be open to traffic much sooner than that, because it's a relatively straightforward project. New deck, new rails, some bridge abutment shoring up, and some work in the river. Fairly straightforward, but it's going to be a little confusing for people initially, and we hope that as the better weather comes and daylight is with us most, more time than not, that that kind of confusion will end, and people will get used to the flow.
I have seen an improvement down there very quickly, you know, within a couple days, I think the habitual slip lane turn has been relieved.
There wasn't anybody that was making that mistake when I was down there.
I can't afford it, I just do it.
I'm so tempted to do it. I come off the highway, I got my right blinker on, and I, oof, got to go straight, but...
There one more thing, we did, John McFadden and Sharon Brush and I have volunteered to develop a set of performance metrics. We've done a lot of research, I've spoken about some of that research with Stu, shown him that. We've been meeting regularly, we're probably going to have something to show to Stu to work with, and then within, I would say, maybe a month to show to the select board.
Thank you. Sharon?
Just thanks.
Oh, my pleasure.
It's been a pleasure. I'm sure we haven't seen the last.
No, a couple of quick things, yeah, the Cultural Bennington Planning Committee is working on the event we told you about. Yeah, the Cultural Bennington Planning Committee is working on the event we told you about, Exposure in Bennington 2015. We've had some great commitments as exhibitors and sponsors. Bennington College this week signed on as an exhibitor and we expect to see a representation of Tangun City's cultural relationship with us. So that's exciting, something that you folks had a lot to do with. And Benmont Avenue, I just want to remind people, those businesses are open. You have to access them from one side or the other or just from the south, but please don't forget your favorite business is just because it might take another couple of minutes to get there. As Stu indicated, you know, losing access on a road can be very difficult for a small business over an extended period of time. So try to keep those folks in mind when you're out shopping. And again, I want to thank the voters, the select board, the town staff. Lynda Bermudez is putting up with us all this time and for some of the longest meetings probably ever known to man. And that's about it. So thank you all. Appreciate your support. I will be back with that other stuff.
Move, we go into executive session.
Okay, do I have a second? All right. Executive session regarding contracts, any discussion? All is in favor? That is six in favor. Thank you, everyone.